Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. If you would stand, we'll have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Please. That's right. Heavenly Father, we would ask for your presence in these chambers tonight as we deliberate the issues of our city. We ask that you would guide and direct us as we try to come forth, Heavenly Father, with a budget that will meet the needs of those in this city that we serve. We ask that you would bless those on foreign shores. We ask that you would grant peace there, Heavenly Father, and that you would just bring those soldiers and those sailors home to a safe place. We ask now that you would go with us, that you would guide us, that you would direct us, that you would be in our thoughts on a daily basis. And we give you thanks for all that we have, for we know it has come from you. We make our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight, as always, is our audience for visitors. It is at this time that if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council on any issue except dealing with the budget, and we do have a public hearing, so we take your comments at that time, if that's okay. But if you have something else that you want to address council on other than the budget, we'd like to hear from you now. Mr. Carmine.
My fact, I thought you had a special meeting just to wish me happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Ray.
Thank you, thank you. But anyway, unless anything I say, no members, none of you on this council, incidentally, I didn't address you properly. Mayor Helsel, members of council, I'm Ray Carmine. Glad to be here, still being alive. But unless we tell you what is happening in our community, because you are going to be working on the budget, I have nothing to do with the budget. And the fact that you had nothing to do with reassessments or anything like that, there are two sides to every issue, and I'm not sure whether I should be thankful or cry with the last reassessment, but it does affect me in many ways and probably some of you. I, as you know, I have some property on Pasture Road, 20 acres down there, and I, of course, I'm living at Pecoson Place right now, an apartment, and signed another year's lease then. But the last reassessment was somewhat shocking. I realize that most folks I talked to, they got, the price of the houses went down, I think mine went down $11,000. Yeah, it's wonderful, your house. I haven't lived in a house for 12 months, I'm intending to tear it down, just haven't done it yet, so I'll still be taxes on as long as it's there, on Pasture Road. But when I got my reassessment, my reassessment went from $1,212,300 to $1,588,000. I've got a $375,000, $300 increase, $375,000 increase on those 20 acres. Most of you know I'm a property rights person, and if you hear me around, you're going to hear that Fifth Amendment, which will let you know that you may not take the use of my land or anybody's land, not your land, not my land, or anyone's land, without compensating them. And yet, for the state, when it passed wetlands legislation and took all so-called wetlands used from people, none of us were overcompensated a dime, nor were the 40 million other Americans that had their lands taken under these same wetlands, this Wetlands Act. Now, there was another thing that came about a few years back, which none of you were involved in, it's called the Chesapeake Bay Act. It was quite interesting, because when my daughters were growing up, four daughters, I had five peninsulas on Roberts Creek. Each of them got to select a peninsula that they could build their homes on someday. And so they wanted to come back to Pecoson. I don't have, well, I do have one daughter now that's closed on a home in Pecoson that they hope to retire here in another three or four years. But I came up here for four years trying to talk council out of going along with that Chesapeake Bay Act, especially resource protection areas. So they were very nice to me, though. They brought me out here and they said, well, now, this is the city did this for me, showed me a nice layout of my peninsulas and the fact that unfortunately, I could originally got in at least 20 lots. I didn't want to sell it, though. I get this, I do not want to sell this land. And then they said, now, with the, when we pass, if we pass the Chesapeake Bay Act, look, you can have 13 lots, but all your waterfront peninsulas are not usable anymore because they weren't 200 feet wide. So as a result of that, none of my children can ever be along in water in Pecoson, or any of that land. But mainly, whereas I was only paying the city $9,000, of course, this last reassessment, I've got to come up with above $12,000, so now I'm letting you have all my social security checks. Because as a retiree from the shipyard 23 years ago, I haven't had a raise. We don't get any raises. With the social security, we've gotten some colas, but, and I'm also now going into that, I think I get $700 a month to help pay you, not you folks, to pay for taxes, let's put it that way. So what I want you to realize is that there wasn't any real, now, you have done your best since you've been on this council to keep taxes reasonably. You reduced our taxes because of the, you know, reassessments and what have you. The fact that the state of Virginia, federal government, is in so much trouble now is simply because of, and well, in 1999, 2000, there was a big drop in the market, a big crash with all the high-tech stuff, and then 2007, there's another big crash in the market if you own any bank stocks and stuff like that. So everyone's in trouble. And you've read the paper today, too, what they're going to do over in Gloucester, I think, four days of school a week and cutting out some of the pre-kindergarten classes a half a day. So I know you've got to make some decisions on what to do, but the main thing I wanted to do tonight is let you know that we didn't get any decreases in property in the last reassessment. Because a $375,000, $375,700 increase is a lot of money. So now I'm paying over $12,000, I was only paying $9,000 or something. But I look at it another way that I should be thankful. In view of what the market did in 2007, I, my big holdings were with Covia and with four other banks, and you know what happens to you and me and others when that happened. But I should be thankful because I should have put every dime, I should have cashed in every bit of stock I had three years ago and bought land in Pecoson. And I would probably be a billionaire, standing in front of you right tonight. So I want to thank you for the time, and I enjoy talking to you, and I'm going to quit right down, but I know you've got some tough decisions to make.
Thank you, Ray. Don't forget to get your permit when you tear that house down. Okay, let's move on. Let's move on to the approval of our minutes. We have one session, please.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we approve the regular session, April 12, 2010 minutes.
Okay. Motion made, signal, we adopt the regular session minutes from April 12, 2010. Any concerns, comments, questions regarding those minutes? If not, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Abstain.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
This mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero with one extension.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to the first public hearing, the only public hearing that we have tonight has to do with the 2010-2011 Annual Financial Plan. Mr. Williams, come in.
Mr. Mayor, we talked about this extensively when I provided the recommended budget to you and also in work session prior to this meeting, principally for the benefit of those that are here with us this evening and may be watching us on TV. Without objection, I'd like to ask our finance director to briefly summarize the document. She's got, I don't know, half a dozen or a dozen, I should say, slides. Should move pretty quickly, but hopefully it will help inform people what the subject is this evening.
Okay. Teresa.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to present the city manager's proposed annual financial plan for fiscal year 2011. When preparing the budget, there were five guiding principles driving the decision-making. Oh, sorry. We determined that we needed to maintain essential government services, maintain local funding for the schools, maintain compensation and benefit levels for city staff, protect jobs of the existing city personnel, and maintain compliance with the city's adopted fiscal management guidelines. The fiscal year 2011 revenue sources include general property taxes, other local taxes, other local revenue, state and federal revenue, transfers, and the use of fund balance. The proposed budget is $23,326,751 for fiscal year 2011, a reduction of approximately $108,000. The proposed budget includes a real estate tax rate of 84 cents, which is a three cent increase from fiscal year 2010. The fiscal year 2011 is not a reassessment year. Therefore, the only increases in real estate revenue would be new construction, including new homes, businesses, or additions to properties. There is a $120,000 increase in personal property tax. This is due to the increase in value of vehicles, including SUVs, trucks, and trucks purchased for personal use. Since the state has capped their reimbursement to localities for personal property tax relief, the city has adopted a specific relief method. Therefore, the tax relief percentage to the citizens will be 55 percent. There are no other changes in the general fund, local tax rate, licenses, or fees. Other local taxes are proposed at $2.4 million. The general fund realizes revenue from a variety of smaller local taxes, such as local sales tax, communication sales and use tax, meals tax, consumer utility tax, and business license. Other local taxes account for approximately 11 percent of our total revenue. Other local revenue is proposed at $641,000. This includes permits, licenses, and fees, fines and forfeitures, interest on investments, rental of property, charges for services, and miscellaneous revenue. State revenue is expected to be $3.6 million. This includes our revenue for street and drainage, highway maintenance, library aid, personal property tax relief, and DMV select revenue. Our federal revenue is expected to be about $5,500, and these are federal funds for Plum Island, another federal aid. We plan on transferring $130,000 from the sewer fund to cover the cost of the general fund resources used for our utilities. As shown on this chart, the general fund expenditures decreased from $25,203,970 in fiscal year 2008 to a proposed $23,326,751 in fiscal year 2011, a decrease of approximately $1.9 million. In the general fund, our legislative and administrative spending accounts for 9 percent of our total budget. Public safety accounts for 25 percent, public works, another 7 percent. The school contribution accounts for 37 percent. Parks and Recreation and library account for 4 percent. Our city debt represents 3 percent of our budget. Other categories, such as health and welfare, community development, and non-departmental represent 8 percent, and transfers out represent 1 percent of our general fund spending. The city manager's proposed budget includes $8,716,935 transferred to the school division, a $382,845 increase from the prior year. The school division is expecting $10.6 million in state revenue, a $1.3 million decrease, and $984,000 in federal funding, a $107,000 decrease. As a result of the decreases to state and federal funding, the total school budget is $20,130,782, a decrease of approximately $1.1 million. This decrease in budget resulted in 4.5 full-time equivalent positions being eliminated, including five teaching positions and 9.5 administrative and support staff. Categorical cuts to areas of materials supplies, professional development, student testing, and employee stipends were also made. Transportation was reduced, which would impact the services to the students, and for the second year in a row, no school employees will receive a cost of living increase. The transfer to the debt service fund and the general fund is $267,125, a decrease of $344,000. Our operational, operations cost is budgeted at $4.3 million, or almost an $85,000 decrease. Some of the areas that we had increases in operations include the regional jail, the courts, and sheriff joint services with York County, animal control, mental health costs, social services, and economic development. These increases in costs were offset by decreases in departmental budgets, which include our parts in labor for transportation. 79 percent of our total revenue in the city comes from general property taxes. We are dependent upon single-family and residential taxpayer base, and our commercial and agricultural account for 5 percent of our assessments. Many items have been identified as needs in the fiscal year 2011 through beyond fiscal year 2015 capital improvement plan, but have been pushed out to years longer than desired. The city currently doesn't have a replacement policy for smaller assets, such as police cars, computers, or equipment. Our additional personnel also need to be addressed. There are no full-time position proposed, even though the city is well below the National Fire Protection Association recommendations. Three additional firefighter paramedics are needed. Staffing may not be, may also not be adequate for our police department, our public works, and mosquito control, and for street drainage and maintenance. And there has also been no cost of living increase for city employees for the second consecutive year. Our debt service is expected in fiscal year 2007 to be $2.2 million. The city debt accounts for $604,000, and the school debt $1.4 million. The city recently refinanced some of its debt, resulting in savings of $500,000. This graph in the fiscal year 2011 proposed budget depicts the city's debt service over the years. The city's largest outstanding debt is from the school general obligation bonds, which were used for school construction projects. The city also has other bonds and notes, which have been used to pay for various city and school projects. We anticipate receiving a total of $1.1 million that is broken out of $775,000 from VDOT, $775,000 in the general fund, and $392,000 in the capital projects fund. The capital projects fund, we plan to use those funds as $198,000 for our street paving and $194,000 for drainage projects. Those projects include Sandy Bay Drive, Leyton Way, and the Hopkins Court, Oxford Muse. The solid waste fund total budget for 2011 is $851,299, of which $58,199 is the use of net assets, and another $45,000 is transferred for the general fund. There are no proposed fees changes for fiscal year 2011 in the solid waste fund. Our utilities provides for the maintenance of sewer lines and pump stations. For fiscal year 2011, the expenses are projected to be $2.6 million, an increase of a little over $300,000. This increase is due to the consent order as mandated by the courts. In order to pay for the sewer extension, small increases were pre-planned for several years. The fee is proposed to remain level at $50 bi-monthly for fiscal year 2011. Businesses will continue to pay the $50 bi-monthly fee, plus a commercial consumption fee of $1.75 for every 100 cubic feet. We project approximately 4,900 households will use our sewer system. Parks and Recreation Fund budget is proposed at $413,720. This fund accounts for our parks and recreational activities, which are financed by user fees, the pool, and special events. New this year is a proposed facility user fee of $10 per participant of all non-city-sponsored athletics, that is, non-parks and rec activities. This is to be used to defray the cost of manpower and lights for the use of the athletic fields. This budget, this year's budget also includes $78,300 transfer from the general fund to help support, supplement the user fees for various activities. This is an increase of approximately $32,000 from fiscal year 2010. The fiscal year 2011 proposed budget for fleet management is $633,569, or a decrease of over $83,000, or 11.6 percent. Fees are charged to the city departments and schools based on the usage. The budget document is available for viewing at the Pecoson Public Library, the city manager's office, and is also posted on our website. We're currently scheduled to adopt the budget on May 10, but the budget must be adopted by May 22.
All right, thank you, Teresa. Well done. Any questions of finance director from anybody on council?
Teresa, thank you. Appreciate it. Well done.
All right, let's open the public hearing then, and it is, at this time, if there's anyone who would like to address council regarding the budget, we will hear from you now. Yes, sir.
I'm Dana Sutler.
Right here, sir, if you don't mind, please, and just give us your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name's Dana Sutler. I live in Huntwoods, 9 Huntwood Drive, and I believe that we may be overlooking a significant income potential in Pecoson. 98, or 78 percent of our budget, whatever the number was up there, was from residential taxing. But if we levy a tax or a licensing fee on apartments per bedroom, we can generate a significant amount of money to help offset that budget, where we don't have to pass all of these taxes on to the homeowner. The homeowners are sitting back in a recessionary period, just like all the rest, and I'm for keeping and maintaining the schools, don't get me wrong. My wife's a teacher. But I'm for looking for other sources of income, and I sincerely believe that apartments represent a significant source of income for us. You say, well, the tenants will all flee the city. Well, that solves a lot of problems also. Takes the pressure off the schools, the pressure off the public resources, and the pressure off our traffic. So it's a win-win situation. I wish you would all look at it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Let's start on this side. He'll be bashful.
I've never been to a PECO.
I didn't think so.
My name's Deb Antin. I'm in 3 Patrick Lane. Thank you, Mayor, and council members, for allowing me to speak now. Approximately about eight years ago, my husband and I relocated our family up to my native state of Virginia, and luckily for us, the first bid that we put in in York County, the House fell through, and the people showed us a house in Pecoson, so we moved into here. And I've been very happy living here for the last eight years. It's a great city, great school system, small-town atmosphere, everything that we wanted. When I'm looking over for the last couple of years, between '07, '08, and '09, '10, and '10, the student-to-teacher ratio in kindergarten has increased 16 percent, and in fifth grade, it's increased 15 percent. So when I was looking at the budget for school this year, I know that the instruction will be affected this year, not like it has been before. And then I know that when y'all proposed this assessment, knowing that council, for the last eight years, that this has been researched thoroughly and has been debated among yourselves, and so I just was going to say that I support you and this proposal at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else on this side? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Robbie Fix, and I live at 26 Windy Point Drive, and thank you for letting me speak. My husband and I grew up in Pecoson, and then we moved back to Pecoson to have our children and raise them in the Pecoson Public Schools. So because of that, I would like to say that I support the increase in the 3 percent, and just wanted to let you know you have my support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else on this side? Dee.
Mayor and council members, I'm Dee Dee Watlington. I live at 38 Moore Row. That was my daughter-in-law. She said, "We need you here tonight." My children grew up in this school system, and they had great, great access to excellent schools, and I certainly want the same for my grandchildren, and so I come before you in support of this proposed budget.
Thank you, Dee. Appreciate it. Anyone else on this side? Charlie?
Thank you. Charles French, 11 Riverview Drive. I'm a 26-year Pecoson resident. I've put four kids through our schools. I think most of you know me as a former school board member and chair and supporter of our schools. And I don't like paying increased taxes any more than anyone else. I'm now one of your senior citizens and need to watch carefully where our resources go. But I'm well aware of the value of our school system to this city, to our property values, to our quality of life, and the Pecoson pride we all have in living here. It's well-known and accepted by our residents that any time Pecoson is mentioned or discussed, the quality of our schools is one of the first and primary topics. I realize it's your responsibility to maintain and support our schools, and if raising taxes 3 percent is what it will take, then I ask you to support that increased tax rate. And we've continuously produced a number of very successful students who are educated in Pecoson. Pecoson students excel and are educationally prepared to do well when they go away to college or enter the workforce, and employers know that. Please keep in mind that we don't have excellent schools because we have excellent students. We have excellent students because we have excellent schools and programs. So I thank you for your continued support of the schools. Now, I'd like to make a few comments with a different hat on, if I could. I'm employed as the military's school liaison officer for this area. I'm the person that incoming families from all DOD branches talk to about the 12 school districts in Hampton Roads when they're relocating and deciding which district or area best meets their needs and interests. Now, I certainly would not say one school system is better than another, or the test scores are the only and best rating tool, but I do explain the programs school systems offer, the statistics, graduation dropout, disciplinary rates, things like that, the demographics, the athletic teams, and many other ratable and non-ratable school choice options that each school district, that they may be aware of when deciding, or may not be aware of when deciding where to educate their children. Many military families place a high value on quality of education. Pecoson currently has 750 military-connected children out of 2,400. I'm well aware that the statewide budget reductions to all school systems will have an impact across the board, but I'm also aware that the larger systems have programs and personnel that could be eliminated without serious reductions in the quality of education they can provide. I would sure hate to see the council not take appropriate action to allow Pecoson, the Pecoson school system, to continue as one of the premier districts in the state, and the programs and services currently provided to its citizens and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate it. Anyone else on this side? Okay. Oh, Hank?
My name is Hank Brodsky. I live at 13 Carriage Hill Drive. I have four children that came up through the school system, two completely through the schools system from kindergarten up, and my wife also was affiliated with the school system. The question in my mind, and I had a plumbing project that I was doing all afternoon, and I was kind of humming this to myself, never, ever, ever, ever trust a politician when he says, "Trust me." My question is, there's a 37 percent of the budget that's going to the school systems now. I think that was the number. If I'm wrong, it doesn't make that much difference to the argument. The point is that if we have a, an increase in our real estate taxes, how are we going to be assured that that money is going to be going to the school? to be assured that that money is going to be going to the school system? The money will be coming into the general fund, and now we fall back on the political, "Trust me, we're going to fund the school system." But it, it's a, it's a question that doesn't have to be answered here, and probably wouldn't be, but I see, under the circumstances that we have in the city of Pecosin now, and I don't want to go into this any further than this, but there are other ways where the citizens can be more directly involved, and the money that gets raised by taxes, they can be assured that the money will go to the school system, and through elected school boards, and given the, the taxing authority. But my question to you all, I mean, that's for a later time, to solve the problem here, how can we be assured that the money that is going to be raised by that three-cent increase, or whatever it comes out to be, how can we be assured that that money is going to go to the schools? Thank you.
Thank you, Hank. Okay. Anyone else on this side? Okay, how about over here? Mr. Priska?
My name is Phil Priska, I live at one-sixteen River Road, and I've been a citizen here in this great city for over twenty years, and my children also went through the school systems. I rise in support of the city manager's proposal. I don't like a tax increase, I don't think anybody does, but to keep the quality of our schools up, I think we need to do that. And I trust you to do the right thing with the tax money. Situations do change, and like Mr. Brodsky said, I think a lot of us will be watching to make sure that money isn't moved. But right now, I think we need to support our school system. I thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I'm Jake Van Camp, I live at forty Church Street, and like I say, I support the extra tax for the schools, I suppose, nobody likes it, but support it. One thing I would like to recommend, just to look at, not right now, maybe a year or so down the road, where my mother lives, who's seventy-two years old or so, once they reach retirement age, sixty-three, if they've lived in this house their whole life, their property taxes freeze, because their pay essentially freezes, like Mr. Carmine's. So if it's something that could be looked at locally for lifelong Pecosin residents, I think it may be something worthwhile for the folks that live here their whole life and wind up retiring and staying here, that's a little benefit we may be able to give back to them. So it's just something to throw out there, I look to try to retire someday and live here the rest of my life, and maybe by then, another twenty or thirty years, that, something like that may be in place, just something to think about for our senior citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Van Camp, we appreciate it. Let me just assure you that the city does have a program in place, and we'd be very interested in talking to your mother.
Sure.
I'm not sure what the number is, and Graham's not here, Randy, do you have?
No, I have, I have. Anyway, we've had a number of folks that, and it's scaled, depending on their income, and it's, it's, it's a great program.
Gotcha, I've just heard a lot of folks, you know, I'm in construction, I deal with a lot of folks, and some folks, a lot of folks on fixed incomes, and, and they claim, you know, just like Mr. Carmine's, taxes go up and everything else, social security, nothing else goes up, and like I said, if they move, then the taxes, you know, whatever the going rate is, that's what they pay, but she's lived where she has for the last twenty years, and whatever the taxes were the day she turned sixty-three, that's it if she lives there till she's on it.
She may very well, she may very well qualify.
Yeah, well, she don't live here, but it's, that's why, that's why I was suggesting, because I think it would be good for our community.
We do have that program.
Very good.
We do have it.
Thank you.
And I think probably one of the best, best in the country.
All right, thank you.
All right, sir, thank you. Anyone else on that side? Okay. All right, close the public hearing, let's move on to new business. First item is an economic development discussion, Randy?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Callis is going to present, essentially what we have for this evening. Council discussed at its joint session with the IDA, its desire to move forward, to update the Big Woods study, to also include a implementation plan, to take that from concept to, to something on the ground. Mr. Callis has worked with the folks that prepared the original study, Landmark and Associates, and if I can get him to move towards the podium, Mr. Callis, we'll briefly present that. I would point out to you that one of the aspects here is that we are suggesting using Landmark to facilitate some or all of your upcoming retreat on economic development in June. It's an embedded decision, and we would welcome your input, both on the scope of, we want to make sure before we went any further, that what we were planning to do aligned with your expectations, and also get your guidance on that. Mr. Callis?
Thank you.
Well, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Helsel, members of city council. Included among your agenda information is a scope of services outline and proposal from Landmark Design Group. The proposal is for a land use study, which will provide a comprehensive overview of development potential in the Big Woods. Landmark Design Group has proposed information procurement, land use plan preparation, and an implementation strategy for the plan. Previously, Landmark provided work for the Pecosin Industrial Development Authority in two thousand and four, preparing both the Big Woods and Messick Point development studies. Staff is pleased to offer a brief summary of the core elements of the Landmark proposal, its potential benefits, and a possible timeline for its implementation pending city council The scope of services outline proposal is prepared as three separate initiatives, along with eight additional service opportunities. Staff is proposing core tasks one, two, and three for implementation. The combined fees for tasks one through three is twenty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. In task one, Landmark will prepare base mapping showing buildings, circulation, utilities, drainage, wetland areas, property lines, and other information that will affect the plan. Additionally, in order to gather information and input from the entire community, Landmark will conduct meetings with Pecosin residents, Pecosin businesses, and private landowners, the Industrial Development Authority, the Planning Commission, city council, and city staff, to develop a summary of findings. Landmark will provide the comments to city council for review as part of the land use In task two, Landmark will prepare a draft land use and connectivity plan with potential uses. Site plan information will be utilized in order to accurately prepare the alternative sketches, including a walk-in medical facility and other particular uses that may be identified. The plans will consider connections and streetscape improvements between the city hall area and the With Creek Road-Victory Boulevard corridor. A separate With Creek Road study will be prepared in-house by Principal Planner Joseph Carter, and will complement Landmark's work. Landmark will also prepare and convey an illustrative plan of the preferred alternative. The plan will be hand-colored and scanned to provide digital files that can be printed at various sizes for marketing purposes. This task will also include a presentation meeting of the final plan to city council or at a public meeting. In task three, Landmark will work with the city to prepare an implementation strategy for the land use plan. The strategy is expected to address staffing requirements, specific roles of city economic development entities, anticipated infrastructure investments, timing requirements, and phasing alternatives. The implementation strategy, as well as the land use plan, will be assembled in a summary report and provided to the city as a bound document and in digital form. Additionally, a market update will be prepared and conveyed, including demographic information and present real estate conditions. Staff has prepared a summary of expected benefits which could be realized from the land use study. First, the process will ensure that input is gathered from Pecosin residents, private landowners, the Pecosin business community, and the city of Pecosin for land use plan development. Second, the end product will provide updated information for the two thousand and four Big Woods development study. Third, the land use plan will be comprehensive, as it will consider both public and private property in the process. Finally, the land use plan will identify and recommend an implementation strategy. Staff has prepared a proposed timeline for the land use plan pending city council approval, with information gathered June to August, a presentation of the plan in September, and implementation initiatives to follow in October, following any final revisions to the plan. If the core initiatives, as described, meet with city council approval, city staff will review them with the Industrial Development Authority at its April thirtieth meeting, and request funding for the Landmark proposal. I'm pleased to answer questions or provide additional information as requested.
Thank you, Dave, very, very well done. Let me just make a couple of comments, if I could. Now, thank you. Number one, I guess we should say that we, as a council, agreed with Randy's decision to, to let Dave kind of lead the charge with our economic development policies and procedures. And the one thing that you said tonight that caught my ear was something that we haven't done in the past, and that was to actually implement a program, to actually get something moving. And it's my understanding that that's Dave's, going to become Dave's primary job, is to, for us to get out, talk to people, and try to bring some, some businesses to this community. And those of you that spoke tonight, who may have had some reservations about tax increases, this is what we need to help offset those things. The public also needs to know that, that, you know, we're also in, in conversation continually with the federal government regarding some contracts that, that those folks will be letting next September, that, that could provide some, some employment here in the city of Pecosin. And Dave, you and I have already spoken with Lisa Rowe and with Colonel Malloy, I believe his name is, to try to, to spark some interest there, and we do have a fair amount of new businesses that are contemplating Pecosin, so I, I think what you hit on tonight, and what Randy has, has done thus far, is to get a project, get it implemented, and get it moving, and I don't think that the time span is lengthy. I think that's, that's probably a shorter period of time as this council would want to see, because we really need to be, to get moving and move, move very quickly. Clearly, we've got some obstacles to overcome, but, you know, I personally think that you're the right man to, to jump those hurdles, and to get us connected with the right persons. Also, would indicate to the public, and those of you that are here tonight, that we, we're having discussions with Centaur as well, about some medical facilities here, so we're not just sitting around doing nothing. We, we are, we are in a mode of trying to improve our community, and try to, to bring other businesses to this community, not only for the good of the community, but certainly to offset the burden of real estate taxes, and I understand, I understand that as well as anybody, so. But I think the fact that we're going to put something together and implement it is, is where we need to go. That's all I've got to say about that. Dave, anybody else?
I, I have to echo what you said, I mean, I fully support having the commercial development go into the Big Woods in accordance to the comprehensive plan, because that's where we have it in the comprehensive plan, and we really do need more commercial development here. And one thing people need to realize is, we need to do this in a timely manner, because the wetlands keep expanding over there, and if we don't do it soon, the window is, is going to close, so that is very timely that we get that commercial development in there. Two, two things I noticed, one, from the notes, there was some discussion about having a retreat in June, I fully support having a retreat, it had the Planning Commission in there, and also if we could add the IDA to come with that, that'd be okay with other members of council, to have the IDA come to that, that planning. And the other thing is, it's a question for Randy, twenty-two thousand dollars, is that in the budget, or would that come out of the, the hundred and nine thousand dollars that looks good, we look to the good right now?
As envisioned, we are planning to go to the IDA and ask them if they can pick that up.
Ah, good.
If they determine that they can't, then we have another option. You, you may see in the proposed budget, for the first time, at least that anyone recalls, the beginnings of a small budget for economic development, there's twenty-five thousand dollars recommended in there, so we do have a, a fallback should the IDA option not be the one.
And then we can phase this as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, basically, the way you bid this out, we can select task, task one, and then make a decision whether to proceed, so.
Yes, sir.
Not the twenty-two thousand upfront, you can basically make eight-thousand-dollar decisions at a time.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there questions or comments of Dave?
Just a comment, I guess, I would think task one is pretty much complete. I mean, we had the GIS system in place now, and we've gone through the utilities and the, the photographing of that thing, so it should be just like off-the-shelf thing for Landmark to pick that up and use that as their starting document. I don't think in the two thousand and four study, we had as much computer-aided assistance that we have now, so, I mean, they can't probably fall back into two thousand and four and get a lot of information out of that, except for, here's the Big Woods and here's Messick Point, period.
And that's, that's the, and I guess building on that conversation, frankly, you know, this doesn't address Messick Point, so did we envision something, doing something with Landmark on Messick Point, or with, or discuss that at a later time with a whole different set of.
I think we're about to discuss Messick Point in the very, very near future.
You're right.
I, I think. But I just wanted that out there, so.
Yeah, good.
If that, if that were to fall through, or whatever, then, yeah, we would, we would like to use the same group, so that.
Right.
We're unified when we're out there marketing.
Okay, any other comments?
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to item two in the new business resolution authorizing the award of contract for health insurance, Ray.
Mr. Mayor, these days, the good news is seldom comes our way, but I'm very pleased to say that our finance staff, working with us, and our insurance consultant, worked to rebid our health insurance program this year. We thought that perhaps, given the national discussion on health care and the general recession, we might find a good period to receive a bid, and we did. Essentially, the program that is recommended for your consideration this evening is essentially the one we have now, with a couple of minor enhancements to it, and the best news of all is there is no anticipated increase in group medical for the coming year, either for the city or for the employees, and the increase in dental, which is a relatively small portion of the total program, was held at three percent. Teresa and her staff did an excellent job on that, and they're here to answer your questions, but it's not often we get to say, in terms of health insurance, we can do as much or better for no more cost, and we'd ask your consideration.
Okay, that's a good report, and thank you, Teresa and, and Robbie, appreciate the hard work that you folks do.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Anthem for employee group medical and dental insurance.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made, second, we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments, any questions? If not, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, Judy. Let's move on to item three in the new business, it's a resolution endorsing the declaration of interdependence. Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor, this is an item that we were asked to consider, which will be considered, and if approved, jointly signed in a recognition event for the Hampton Roads' first-ever regional day, which is taking place on May the sixth. The governor will be the keynote speaker, and it will be a day when all of the folks in the region, elected, appointed, and citizens, will be focusing on the importance of solving regional issues together, and it is here presented for your consideration and approved.
Okay.
This is, this is pretty easy for the city of Pecosin, in that we are interdependent on York County, and participate in all of the regional activities that I think are, are approved before a decision, including peninsula regional jail, police dispatchers, and all that sort of stuff that we are interdependent on. So I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution endorsing a declaration of interdependence.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion made, second, that we adopt the resolution. Are there any concerns, comments? If not, Mr. Wheeler?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy, and just, just a comment about, you know, regionalism, and while we support regionalism a great deal, it's, it's, you know, our first action is for this city and the people that live here, but in terms of the region, then. But in terms of the region, they are supporting us with our efforts to get With Creek Road, East Coast Way, across the bridge to Hampton Rais. And they've been very, very focused on that. They've been very, very helpful. And we'll meet with the governor's representative on Friday, so we're hoping something positive will, will come out very, very shortly. And at least we, when we need to evacuate this city, we have a route now here. So looking forward to Friday, and appreciate those folks in the region that are supporting us with that, with that effort. All right, Mr. Wheeler, any comments?
Thank you, sir. I do have a few. Just a reminder that at your next meeting, we will be holding a public hearing pertaining to the appointment of new school board members. Appointment itself is anticipated at your second May meeting. I wanted to bring to your attention an idea that I have discussed with a couple of you over the past several months, especially as we debriefed the November nor Easter, and that is the idea of coming up with a resident sticker, not a tax sticker or anything like that, but a, but a sticker that we could provide to our residents so that in times of emergency, they could easily identify themselves with a window decal, that they are a resident. That would help us control access in and out. It would also help us, in our efforts to quickly identify those people joyriding in areas that they shouldn't be in, crowding wakes into people's houses and other things that they shouldn't be doing. I bring this to you for a couple of reasons. One, it does have a bit of a cost to it. You've seen this once before in my weekly report. But the timing on this issue is one of the best ways, if we're going to do it, to get the word out, is to include it as part of the upcoming Island Tide. And so I bring this to you. If you would like us to proceed, we are ready to do so and can have it out this time rather than it towards the end of hurricane season, a little bit of prevention built into that calendar, so.
Absolutely, Randy. And how would you propose that be funded? Is that in the budget?
It is not in the budget, so it would, it would essentially, it could come out of the contingency reserve, but as you recall, overall, our budget is pulling down slightly, so this would just pull our overall budget down by just a little bit more.
What's the cost?
Approximately $2,200 production, mailing, inclusion.
Okay. I just wanted.
Everybody to understand.
It's not much.
We're not talking about a lot of money.
It seems to make sense. I don't know what other people.
Well, one of the biggest complaints I know that I get and the rest of council get, and I know what Cliff has to deal with, and the fire department have to deal with, all our sites here from other areas, and they're not really, they're not really caring about what continued damage they do by running the trucks, the four-wheel trucks through the tide and that kind of thing. So I just hate to send a message that, you know, that we are nearly in the poorhouse, because that's just not the truth. I mean, this city is well-run. We don't spend money frivolously. We try to take care of the, those things that we need to take care of and move forward. So I think it's just a small amount of money to spend on a program that I think will be successful.
Basically, it's basically a security decision.
It is.
Be a one-time sticker issued for citizens, with, you said, extras held in reserve for new people.
Yeah, the idea.
Part of a welcome package or whatever we have going, ongoing now.
They wouldn't have to, to keep it on their car all the time, what I would do with my own, because it's the kind of sticker that you have at Jiffy Lube or a place like that, it's the kind that goes in, you can peel it off, just leave it, leave it in your glove box. It's also easily transportable, so we don't have to send multiple ones to people. And it's easy if you pick up and sell cars, so we're trying to, to limit, limit our replacement costs down the road as well.
So you would say one per family and not one per car?
That's what we would send out with the Island Tide if somebody really wanted another one. I'm sure we'd give it to them, but the point is, you wouldn't need to have multiple ones. Without objection, we'll, we'll proceed that way. Congratulations. I hope I don't beat one of you all to something that you wanted to talk about, but recently, the Pecosin High School band was at Disney World, and as part of that, received the distinction of Virginia Honor Band, which is the highest achievement that you can get for a high school band in Virginia. And I think that's, that's real neat. Somehow I managed to miss them in my time there. We passed, but I wanted to note that, too. Four other things briefly. Teresa spoke about this during the public hearing, but there are three proposed fees associated with Parks and Recreation Fund in the budget. One is the $10 participant fee that Ms. Owens talked about for persons that participate in non-city-sponsored athletics and field use. There's also a fee for outside groups using our facilities. And the other is a small proposed increase in the swim fee. And the reason I bring that up to you now is we'd like to include that without objection from $150 per participant for swimming to $155 in our upcoming issue with the Island Tide. If that causes you concern at this point, we can include it at the old rate, but we just didn't want to create confusion on behalf of the citizens. If we published $155 and they got to us and we asked, or excuse me, if we published $150 and then we told them it's $155, they may, they might get confused. That's a nice word for that.
Objection here.
No, either. $155 is fine. We'll see any money.
Thank you. I wanted to, to recognize the small army of folks that gave a tremendous amount of care to Messick Park over the weekend, to include it, but not limited to members of the Kiwanis, the Boy Scouts, city staff, in addition to Dave and myself. The real work was done by Milton Wiggs and Noel Hernandez. They did a great job. If you have not been down there, and a bunch of other citizens showed up as well, if you haven't been down there to see it, you should. The makeover on that park is, is really something to see. I also wanted to share with you, I have another meeting tomorrow with some of the folks that were originally helped organize Kids Island, specifically Debbie Arborough and Brenda Fisher. And I expect coming back to you at your next meeting to talk about what's next with Kids Island. I was going to talk about this one aspect in our work session. We ran out of time. There is, in our capital projects fund, an unencumbered balance. It's a small residual, it's about $50,000. You can leave it, you can use it for something else, but at this point, what I'm asking you to consider is having that be the seed money for either the refurbishment or the eventual replacement out there. That's a decision that comes down the road, but I felt that was, that was a small pot of money I would bring out and make sure that you knew everything that I knew. But expect to come back next time and have them to come back with me. We're, we're working together. And lastly, just to note, for those that may be watching, the public hearing on the budget did serve or seemed to constitute the first reading, so when you come to it at your May 10th meeting, if you're ready to adopt, you'll be ready to proceed to second reading and formal adoption.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tom?
Yes, first off, I'd also like to recognize the Cub Scouts, because they were there at the Messick Park.
With the Cub Scouts?
And I, and I'd also like to recognize Randy Wheeler and Dave Callis, and who's driving the?
Noel Hernandez.
Noel Hernandez, really great on the cat, driving that around. And you have to realize, this is our city employees on their Saturdays coming to help refurbish Kids Island. So that's what we have our, our staff doing on their, their Saturdays, and they do it because they want to. And it's, it really was, it was appreciated, and it does look better. I do think people should go by and look at it. Now, on Kids Island, one thing I've, I've gone by, I've looked at it, what we may want to consider is taking down those structures or items, taking out those items that we think are not safe, and reopening it with just those items that are safe, you know, just as a stopgap-type thing, so that we can reopen it to some extent. And I, and as I said last time, I think you can probably find some labor again, like we did on, on the Pocket Park, to, to help take some, take some things down, so we can do that as an interim. Also, congratulations to the Honor Band. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that. My, both my kids were in the band at one time or another. Doug Spruill, the assistants there, the band parents, I mean, that's, and of course, the kids, but that's why it's an Honor Band. It's, there's real continuity there, and the assistants in that, that band are just tremendous, and the band parents and what they do give us so much support. Thank you, everybody who provided input to the budget tonight. And then I would be very remiss if I didn't remind everyone watching that this Saturday, from 11 o'clock to 5 o'clock, on the corner of With Creek and Pecosin Avenue, you can get the best barbecue around from the Kiwanis Club. That's this Saturday, on the corner of Pecosin and With Creek. Please come by.
All right, thank you, Tom. Carrie?
Well, I agree with what you said about our band, and also Councilwoman Crawford's child is in that particular band this year, so that needed to be brought out. I think we appreciate the input on the, on the budget, and there was a comment about taking appropriate action, and I believe that appropriate action can be taken without a tax increase. And at this very time, with what I know so far, I'm not sure that we're going to need to go that way. But I just wanted to, to get that out, that it's not a done deal as may. Many people that read the News People article, article seem to think that it may be. So just wanted to bring that out. That's, that's all.
Good. While we, while we're, because everybody's going to have something to say about the band, can we do something from this council to them?
Trying, trying to get information.
Okay, good deal. Yeah, bring them here, let's recognize them. They're good, I'm sorry.
May they come in here and play?
Yeah, well, come. Interesting.
We might want to go outside.
Bring them outside, put a performance on the parking lot. Frank?
Nothing tonight.
Okay.
Well, I'd just like to reiterate the comments about the Pecosin High School band, and for Randy and the city employees using their own time to go out and help work on the parks.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd also like to thank the school board and citizens for coming out tonight. It does matter when you come out and talk to us, so I'm glad to hear it. Yay, band! And Randy, I've spoken with you about this before, but the residents of Bunting Lane have been speaking to me, and some of the side streets off of there, concerned about speeding and a high volume of traffic on such a narrow roadway. So I'd like you to please review the recent data that we have and see if you can do anything to improve the situation down that direction.
Please bring a report back at the next meeting.
Okay. Thanks. And come to the Kiwanis barbecue, but also, if you are the bulk barbecue type, we're doing that in about a month, the Kiwanians, so keep that in mind. Drop us a line if you want to be on that list. That is all.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Jean?
Not a whole lot tonight, Mr. Mayor. The Kids Island thing, I kind of echo what Tom's saying. I think that we need to do some type of quick fix to get the park back open in a safe environment. I don't think that all the equipment there is in complete disarray, and I know that with some of the city equipment, we ought to be able to get some of it down pretty quickly, what we consider to be a hazard. But it's definitely a meeting place, and it's a place that is very popular at this time of year. If this was November, we're heading into the deep winter, I'd say, yes, let's take some time here, but let's try and get that place open while we come through what a redesign of that looks like or an improvement of it. But we need to get something on the street quick, and I think it's about time. Now, on the budget, I guess, and heard a lot of, a lot of good comments tonight from the public, and I know that we went out to the public and, and told you that there were some, some issues that we need to hear. Obviously, we know that the public's in support of the, of the school system here. We know that the school system is probably our, their reason we are a city. They really are. It's, it's important to us on council, it's important to the citizens that they remain civil. The reason that we're having this discussion, and I just want to reemphasize, is not because the citizens of Pecosin aren't doing their part towards education. The citizens of Pecosin have always done their part towards education, and their fair share, even in the proposed budget, was flat, whereas the state decrease over two years is about $3 million. So, and, and I heard the speaker at the podium, so how can we be sure that the citizen that will spend your money on education, or that will just go into the thing, really, you should be questioning yourself, how can you be sure that the money that goes to the state can be used for education? Because we surely put in our 37%, and that number was pretty darn close to being right. It's around the 40% number is what it takes to fund our schools from the general budget. That does not include the debt service on the schools, which is also in there, which you saw the majority of the debt comes from the citizens of Pecosin. So the citizens of Pecosin do their share, and always have, and I'm sure always will, to support these school systems. This council will come around, we may fuss with each other, but we will take care of that institution as the primary institution. We know that we're dealing with a school board this year that is quite different than what we've enjoyed in the past. We actually think they may have gone too far in the cuts. And a lot of times in the past, we've, we've kind of had some spirited discussions with school boards in the past. This year, we're on the enviable side of saying, well, maybe you went too far. So we appreciate the school board's hard work, and we appreciate the school administration's hard work in getting, putting together a budget that is, fits the needs, but may have gone too far. That's not to say that we have to increase taxes to do that. I'm not sure of that question yet. We're going to do what's necessary to get those extra dollars in there. But as you increase taxes, I want everybody to, to think about one thing, and that's growth in the city of Pecosin. When we tax residents, probably one of the facts that came up there tonight is incorrect. When we say that residential real estate taxes are the primary contributor, I'd only remind you that landowners are, raw land is being taxed as well. I think Mr. Carmine's touched on it briefly, but raw land, when you increase taxes on raw land, you drive development, because it, it becomes a financial burden for folks to hold on to raw land. If we can't put a governmental answer to that, increasing taxes on raw land will spur more homes. That's just the, the facts of the day. Every, every homeowner of 10 acres or more of a million dollars in real estate or more is not going to pay some minuscule amount for the schools. They're going to pay $300 a year more for a million dollars of real estate. You look at the Big Woods as the primary number of acres, 400 acres, not to mention some other pockets of 20 acres here and there. But councils have to be very deliberate and very, I know that the residents, each homeowner would probably gladly pay $20 more, $10 more a month on their house to support the schools. But if we increase taxes, we don't just increase it on the houses. State law prevents us from drawing out separate fee structure for residents versus landowners. We've had several landowners that have come to the city in, as, close again, as about four months ago, saying, what can you do so that we don't have to sell this property? And so it's a big question. When we, when we say we're going to increase taxes, it's not just on the homes. Every homeowner, I'm sure, would fork up the 10 or so extra dollars for the schools. But if we drive those real estate taxes up, you can count on more land being sold, more land being sold for development, and a growth problem. So we need to keep that in mind as we do this. The comment on the apartments, I guess, Wayne, I'd, I'd ask you to kind of weigh in on that as far as fees on apartments. My first inclination is, I think I know, but I think I'd rather hear the answer from you, and if you're not prepared to give us that answer tonight, I'll wait until the next meeting.
I will get you an answer.
Okay. But I, I thought that was a good comment, and we're certainly open to any comments like that, but we do need to research that.
That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor. All right, thank you, Jean, and council for your comments. And let me add my thanks to those folks somewhere you stayed that made some very good comments regarding the budget. I took it to death to see you here. I was hoping, quite frankly, that we'd have a room running over with folks. The one comment that I heard here tonight, and it's a fair, it's a fair assessment of politicians, I think, because I think we've, I think we've done it to ourselves, if you will. Can I restore anyone's trust in politicians? I don't know that I can do that. I don't know that I can do that. But should we decide that there's some money that will be put aside for schools, whatever it is that we need to do to make sure the community knows and the people know that money is, we'll do it a little differently than the state. It won't be a pretense type thing. It will be where you can see it as a citizen. And I think that's a fair argument. And I think it was a fair question. But I think it's something that if this budget develops into a tax increase, and I'm not convinced that it will at this point in time, we have a few hurdles to get through. The one thing I would say to echo what Tracy had to say and Jean as well, you know, I've probably been here too long, quite frankly. And, but the length of time that I have been here, the one thing that we've always done as a council, and not as individuals, but collectively, we supported our schools. Bottom line, we supported our schools. And suffice it to say, we will continue to support our schools in whatever manner it takes to make sure that our children, grandchildren, and, you know, it's hard for me to believe now I have grandchildren, that'll be starting in the school system next year, as a matter of fact. Hard to believe in it, really.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. But it's true. So I have a concern and I have an interest, again, in our school system. It's, in my opinion, certainly the best in the Commonwealth. And we'll continue to work with what I consider as an excellent school board, who are concerned, their primary concern is the education of the children in this community and nothing else. And to say once again that the superintendent, Jennifer Parrish, has just made a tremendous, has been a tremendous addition to the City of Pecosin and to the school system. I just can't say enough about Jennifer and to her staff in the manner in which they provided the budget, explained the budget, went to the community, answered questions, had it online, had it on the cable channel, their budget and the explanations, what I thought were aptly done. So we appreciate all those folks. But again, we have some decisions to make and they're not going to be easy decisions. We would still encourage, you know, the public's call. The one thing I think this council does, and most councils I've served with over the years, you know, I think we're very responsive, and I know this staff is, to citizens of whatever their needs are. I think for anyone to say otherwise has probably never called a member of council or never called staff, quite frankly. So, you know, I'm thankful to this council for the job that you do and I have an opportunity to work with all of you and see the job that you do. And I see you out and I see you in the community. And I know you're like me, you spend a great deal of time on the phone. And it's enjoyable, believe it or not, especially when you've got somebody like Mr. Carmine to come see you about every other meeting. It's always nice to see Ray. And by the way, we had something to do with drawing that plot, I think, 25 years ago, or whatever it was, as I remember. Okay, I've said enough. We do have, anybody else have anything else to say? Okay, we do have a closed session and someone that would offer a motion and read the session, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move we go to closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 A3 and A5 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended. Discuss disposition of public held real estate in a prospective business where no previous announcement has been made of the business in locating its facilities in the community, i.e. Messick.
Right, clear. Your second? Okay, motion made second, we go to closed session, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Motion made.